Commissioner Hodges, I'll thank you. We need to pledge allegiance.
Certainly. So pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Into the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Commissioner, all right, let's take a look at tonight's agenda. And we will begin with discussion review and or approval of last meeting's minutes. I'll move the unit's presentation aside. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carries. And to our calendar, any discussion, questions, adjustments?
I have none.
Nor do I, then we'll move on to previously discussed documents, discussion and or motion to approve.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Very good. Next up, our registrar of deeds is here. Laura, how are you? Laura, it's still nice to see you and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so. So far, we're doing really well this year.
Good to hear.
It's um continued to increase um that year-to-date revenues just under eight hundred thousand. Just about fifty-four thousand more than this time last year through September. Um projected, if it continues this way, probably be about a hundred thousand circles. So, that's good. Uh dock accounts are high. And mostly mortgages, refinances, equity lines, same as last time. Rates are dropping. Um I looked fixed rate thirty-year, six and six point two eight, around there. So, but we're getting lots of equity lines still. Deeds are uh almost a hundred less than this time last year, but when we are getting them, pretty good size tax stamps, so. Prices are high. Um let's see, recording of documents estimating pretty high, about twelve thousand probably for the end of the year. Or last year was, were, at this time last year, I think we're about seven hundred and thirty-one more documents than last, so. And I went back, um in twenty-four, we had just over eleven, like eleven thousand four fifty-seven. Same thing in twenty-three, twenty-two, we had fourteen thousand four fifty, and then COVID, we had nineteen thousand and higher, but. Back on an average about ten years and it was about fourteen thousand, so we're creeping up there, getting back to about twelve thousand documents. So, which is good for the recording revenue. Uh let's see, expenses were at seventy-three percent spent. Don't foresee any. Large expenses being out of what we've got in the budget. Um Fidler did do the server conversion to the off-site server. And that went on the twenty-first, didn't have any pickups, so everything went smoothly. And it's, it's backed up every minute, it's off-site, it's heightened security, so that's going well. U S Imaging is finalizing their media conversion, that was approved. Um hopefully, all the new images will be uploaded by the end of this month. Even next month, but definitely by the end of the year. So that'll be done. Going to be attending the uh New Hampshire Association of Counties Annual Conference. It's not Washington, the registers do their annual meeting, so I will attend. That is um Sunday, November ninth to Tuesday, the eleventh. Um I know I had briefly spoke last time about sending out a letter to the Laredo customers. Which is, you know, real estate attorneys, title companies, it's our charge account, that they can look at our documents. Um we're going to start charging ten dollar monthly maintenance fee. Effective in January. But there's still Ava Free Public Search, that's anybody can, you know, search our records if they want to print, it's two dollars a page. Laredo is just for, just said, the title companies and real estate attorneys and such. Um the letter went out October second, I might have had ten emails saying, close my account, I don't use it. Which is fine, and that's what we're kind of trying to get rid of, people that aren't using it. Um still have probably a hundred and fifty customers that haven't said anything. I'm sure the first couple months of the year, when they start getting a ten-dollar charge and if they're not using it, I'll close their accounts. So I'm estimating even if we keep a hundred, that's an additional twelve thousand dollars in revenue.
Mm-hmm.
So. Um other than that, I did go to an AARP Scam Jam that was held in Manchester. Um Stratford County Register, Kathy Barabee reached out, so I went down there and we were, we handed out brochures on the property fraud alert. And I was still trying to figure out, I'm gonna maybe make a brochure and drop it off maybe the library, senior centers. I mean, put it out in the papers you needed last year, but not everybody reads the paper, so. I gave a lot to the towns to put in their offices, just it's a free service, anybody that owns property. Villeneuve County should sign up for it, yeah again, it doesn't stop fraud, but it gives you an early detection. I think that's about it. Any questions?
I have, I have signed up for that.
Good, there. Yeah, everybody should, it's free.
Uh Laura, did you learn anything new at the Scam Jam, any new tricks that they're using, or just pretty much?
It was, it was something, it wasn't just property fraud, it was a lot of, I mean, they had the FBI there, it was more. Obviously for AARP, there was, I think there was a hundred people that came and um a lot of just people. The internet saying, you know, people um money fraud, you know, it's not so much the property fraud, so I mean, we gave out a lot of. Brochures, but yeah, fraud's fraud, it's out there, but it's amazing how much people are getting taken for. You know, but there wasn't um, I didn't unfortunately get to stay to the end. Kathy Barabee did stay and said she got to present and. I think a lot of people don't understand the property fraud alert, I mean, they just think, oh, somebody's gonna steal my deed, you know, I mean, there is. You can't lock a deed, you can lock your credit, and that's what, I mean, we did try to explain to people too, if you're afraid somebody's gonna take a mortgage out on your property, lock your credit. You know, freeze your credit, um that you can't freeze your deed. But this does give an early detection, because all of our documents are recorded by name, so you just put your name in, and if, if we. Enter your name into the system, you're gonna get an alert that same day that something was recorded at registry, and you can look it up and see if it was your document or. You know, somebody else with the same name in Villeneuve County. But it is a free service and it's definitely something everybody should do.
Uh Laura, we know in September, interest rates went down by a quarter, correct? It looks like you got a little bit of a pump on your E-locks. Are you, are you anticipating another quarter one drop to the, to the calendar?
I haven't heard, I mean, I, I hoping, but. And again, it's, the equity lines are a little bit, I mean, they do go with prime rates, so when those drop a little bit, because that's just a variable. But I mean, that's what we're seeing mostly is people getting the equity out of their homes that are. Rates high right now, so. And he, as I said, deeds are about a hundred less than they were at this time last year, but I mean, if you go online, there's still plenty of houses for sale. Prices are still pretty high, I mean, they're not as high as they were a couple years ago, I mean, people are. Sitting on them a little bit longer, I should say, but there's, there's still a lot out there and there's still a lot of, we're getting lots of subdivisions, you know, because. Once a town approves subdivision, we get all the plans and there's plenty of them out there, there's still gonna be lots of buildings, so. But, yeah. If rates continue to drop, I'll, I'll see more refinancing, I'm sure.
Thank you, Laura, very much.
Thank you, all right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, commissioners, uh next up, we have a jail analysis presentation by Mr. Dennis Moran and Mr. Graham Dickers. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Looks like you have a lot of information to share.
We've got a lot of information, it depends what you're most interested in hearing and. Uh we don't wanna waste anybody's time, so we do have good line info in the report. Understand maybe folks have read some of it, the estimates in the minutes, who would you like to serve?
Um for you, Mr. Baker?
I am, Mr. Baker.
This one, okay, very good, welcome. Uh. I would start with the line items that you consider most urgent in terms of safety and. Uh mitigating potential lawsuits, in your opinion.
Right, immediately. Sure, I'll just. So we, you know, when we think about buildings, especially these types of facilities, there's, there's a lot of layers to them. Um you guys replaced the roof recently, which is the first layer of keep the water out. Uh from a uh keep the water out on the, on the sides of building, there's a lot of uh doors and windows that are leaking. Blazing and broken and that sort of things that we should be looking at, I would put that on your list of things to focus on, sort of from the. The, same, yes, life safety is, it give people out in a hurry. There's a, a door in the back that is blocked, that needs to be reopened, and I understand, we didn't go out there and block, but I understand that. There's fence issue back there that would have to be dealt with as well. So I also think of life safety from the kind of the mold and air quality and those sort of things, which is what I, you're thinking as well. So that's why I talk about water, so we have some work to do on the doors and windows and just kind of the brick joints and. Control joints, sealant joints around building that need to be handled that. Um from a sheer egress perspective, it's really the only one door for the building as you'd have it today. I don't see that too many major problems with that. Um the things that I did notice was the building's fairly inefficient from a staff perspective. And there's a lot of time wasted there, with just following with, with keys and in door, door, security system. Is, was upgraded with the directions, that can be corrected, filling, but it doesn't cover the entire building, so you can't control the locks. Throughout the whole thing, you hit the intercom, you don't have a camera that pops up at all the doors. You have three or four different variations of locks, so either carrying keys, it just, it slows access throughout the facility down. Which then can turn into a life safety issue if you're trying to get out or to get us people out in a hurry, not to mention just day-to-day moving through the facility. Um so there's, is that sort of what you're looking forward to, to hear from us, or? Do you have specific questions, or you want me to just kind of run through these and?
Please take your time and be thorough, we appreciate that.
Okay.
You know, anything that you two gentlemen think are, are really, really urgent. In terms of safety and liability issues, those are the ones the commissioners have to get working on first.
From a staff perspective or from residents' perspective, or both?
I would say staff slash residents.
Okay. Um all right, so that egress door in the back, I, I think is one thing you should really focus on. The um, the, the doors, frames and hardware, so you've got some corrosion and, you know. Is it a liability that the, the locks, you have to fumble the keys? Maybe, maybe not, I, one of the things that jumps to mind here is the interior glazing, you've got a lot of glazing inside. That is broken and needs to be replaced, where you can't see through it. It's plastic, it's been scratched, you've got, you've, you've got a liability issue, or you don't know what's on the other side of wherever you're going to next. And that glazing should be replaced, there was some security glazing that was broken, you've got kind of metal. Exposed there, that, that can be a bit of a safety issue as well. One of the um, one of the things that it, I would focus on is the, the inmate shower stalls are in pretty rough shape. Thing plumbing in general in this building is in, in cup shape, the shower stalls, the, the, the paint peeling, the, the fixtures, the flooring, all of that really needs some attention. I would focus on that. So.
Uh excuse me, Mr. Moore, you have, you mentioned shower stalls intended with plumbing issues.
Yeah.
Are those plumbing issues confined to the shower stalls, or there are additional?
No, there are plumbing issues with all of the, a lot of the toilets in the facility are, are, I mean. Been there a very long time, they're aging, also the, the staff reported slow drainage of lines, a lot of blockage of lines. And of course, around the floor, that's uh, I mean, this is a multi-layered process here, you, obviously you're not gonna start just hacking floors up, but. Uh from a plumbing perspective, I would probably start with the showers, I think that's your biggest bank of the bucket. Because wet slippery surfaces, you want safety and security in most areas. But the ongoing maintenance issue troubles with. Plumbing fixtures distract your staff. As well.
Also intentionally organized it into two buckets of investment over the foreseeable future. Because small maintenance, construction projects and a correctional facility can cause, uh well, no matter what you do. If you're changing the operations in the day-to-day of the people in the facility, that can lead to incidents and risks for you, so we wanna bundle. We wanna say you go in, you do it once, you make the investment, you come out, you make it as quick and easy as you can. Not get into a routine of every three months, we go in and do project. Of this scale, and then we do something else, and then we do something else and keep on interfering with the operation, so our recommendation is to. Is to bite that first immediate issues bullet. Um and then get to the short-term issues, which is the next breakdown of items in a two, three, four-year period, when you can, when you can budget for it. But not to go in and do one thing, later come in and do another, come in and do another, I mean, keep on. And bad dance if you go on a building that's aging.
Uh with respect to the rebalancing of the air system.
Yeah.
We just put in uh central AC, Denver, was that two summers ago?
So.
So additional attention needs to be paid to the HVAC system?
Right, so from our walkthrough, we were hearing that if, the equipment's been replaced, which is great, you guys have been great with keeping up with that. But when you replace the equipment, you have to go back through and rebalance the system, so. If it was initially designed for whatever, three hundred C at them in this room and five in this room. And go back and confirm that that's where you're at. That, that one, that kind of work is not terribly invasive. I wouldn't put it on a life safety level, but it certainly is something that. You should look into, the, the rebalancing of the hot water supply and return loop, similar scenario where you've replaced some equipment. And now the, the water pipe running through, just balancing that so that you're getting the pressures that you're, that you should have as per the design. When I had, when we asked if that work had been done, we didn't get a solid confirmation that it had been at the time. If, the sense that we got was that we were focused on replacing the equipment. And in, you know, in mechanical rooms or, or whatever room, and not necessarily chasing in throughout the, so. It's kind of completing that. I don't, I don't really see those as high dollar or highly invasive projects.
But they might have been done.
They, they absolutely might have been done.
Okay.
And I just, I couldn't get confirmation that they had or had not.
They were not done.
Okay, they were not.
They were not done.
Thank you.
Commissioner, question?
Yeah. Um I just, as a, we've been looking at this a lot, actually, um and I'm curious how. There's base pricing here, looks like each project, there's a base price.
Yep.
But then when I.
Yeah, it's up there.
It multiplies considerably, so as we are looking at it, and as the board is later gonna be looking at. What can they do?
Yep.
Is there a way to get us from the base price to this? Um like what is it really gonna cost, if they say, okay, we can do, we can replace all the exterior doors and we can do the balancing of everything. You know, we can add these numbers in the base price column.
Sure.
But I get the feeling that's not really gonna be enough to do it.
Right, so the, the way I, I, we pull these estimates together, we don't necessarily understand how you're gonna do the work. So I approach it as if it's one project, you hire a general contractor and they're gonna manage all of this. And, and I understand that's really, really unlikely, because of the disruption to the facility, you're likely gonna pick and choose, but I don't know what the pick and choose is. So what I did is I broke it down into, here's what I think the cost of doing the work is at the top side. And then you have the, the, the parts and pieces that a general contractor would add to it. Whether it was, went directly to a door contractor, here's the work. And then down here, he's gonna have his kind of overhead, his general conditions, is all of those things, the logistics of getting the work done. And then on top of that, down here, I've got contingencies, because I'm not sure when you're going to do that work. So I, I set it up for an adder for about four percent per year to kind of lift it. A construction contingency, because you, you want to have a contingency in case things go wrong, it's a system built. You never know, design contingency, because we don't, no design has been done for any of this, right? So you're gonna have to pay to have some design work done, so putting that in there. So, and then there's this inside the perimeter construction logistics, so when you work in these facilities and you're in the secure perimeter, it takes. A lot more effort to get the work done. The staff, obviously you gotta have, you know, attend the contractors they walk through, but the contractors are slower getting their work done, they can't just come in and out, can't just go up to the truck. Uh typically, obviously, we can work through projects and figure that out logistics-wise, make it easier in both, but. I, I'm, I'm assuming a lot of these things and all of those things have cost. So if you wanna pick just uh exterior windows related things. And then put that in and then run it down, I mean, I can give you the spreadsheet if you want, it's, if you want to play with the numbers, but. That's, that's really the approach I took, there's no magic, add thirty percent, and then you get there. If they're, they're all a little bit different based on where they are in the facility, how difficult that is to do that. And then how long, right, I got general conditions in here for like twelve months, because assuming all this work happens at the same time, it's here construction. If you're just replacing something that takes four weeks, then that number's different. And you wouldn't need a big giant contractor, you got smaller ones, so everything kind of changes. So that's why I tried to break it down, is kind of the cost of the work and then.
So if after there is discussion and um. We get back in touch with you and say, you know, can you give us a better, uh narrower idea on this project, this project and this one?
Sure.
If you can help.
Yep.
Just reshuffling the deck.
Yeah, I can, I can just pull stuff in and out of the spreadsheet and everything just kind of adds up.
All right. There is also no, no magic to pricing renovations, especially in a correctional facility, so. A lot of these multipliers are there to make sure you have the appropriate budget, because we'd much rather you have extra money than you have not enough money in an appropriation cycle.
Yeah, I'm sure when you look at this, it feels like they're high. And what I can tell you is that it is hard to do work in these, these facilities. You, you don't just cut a hole in that wall and, you know, fish a wire down through, all of a sudden the wall's full of ground and rebar and. Now you can't get above, and it's just, it's just slower and harder to do everything. You can't just replace a exterior window by not pulling it out like you do at home. This is grinding and cutting, and then it's just a, it's, it's a very different level, remember? So you have to cover that.
Yeah, I, another, thank you. So if we, you know, there's a lot, we took on all of these. Uh you have immediate needs and then they short-term needs, priorities, you know, it's a. So if we did all of that, which is a really, you know, I don't think it's realistic, actually, for us to spend that kind of money. Um versus a new building. So I guess I'm wanting you to say something about, um you know, kind of what makes sense, where you can see all of these improvements that are priorities. And will fix all sorts of things, but in the end, what are we left with?
So, I, yes. And obviously, I've thought about this as we walk through, so. You can spend your time and effort and money over the next, whatever, four or five years and do all of this work. But you still have a facility that's inefficient for the staff. And doesn't meet ACA or correctional guidelines. So, you know, it's up to you, you guys, what's important to you, right, that, that's kind of where we're at, I'm trying to give you the options and, and walk through the pluses and minuses. If, if you love the building and wanna be here forever, then you can live with that building and we can. Do all these things and keep maintaining it and it'll still function. But what I'm saying is that a, a facility designed for your use will be much more efficient. Just from every perspective.
But it will still in twenty-five years require this type of work that its facility has now, so. A jail is a heavily used building, right, it's like an, an elementary school, uh it gets beat up all the time. Um and no matter what we do, that's gonna keep happening. It costs a ton to renovate because they are made out of things that you're not supposed to be able to destroy. So there's a point of diminishing return, and I get the sense that that's what we're talking about here. When does it no longer good money for the county to be thrown, good money after bad and, and investing in a built facility that's falling apart? Spending sixteen million dollars on this building would not be something we recommend you to. Over the next five years, that's what we're saying, to hit the immediate short-term items, and you can live happily for another ten years doing deferred maintenance tasks. Um and, and it'll just get worse and worse and more expensive. We don't have an equation that tells us in three point five years, you're gonna need to replace this facility. Uh one of the major drivers of costs for counties and for state facilities and everyone in corrections, of course, is staffing. When we found new facilities for counties, we consider twenty-five to thirty percent of a twenty-five-year cost, the capital cost of construction. And the rest of all of that is operations, simple things like utilities, but more so staff positions. If we have inefficient housing units, every staff position is what, five point something full-time employees for the county? If you can't fill those, it's overtime, it costs a lot quickly, and that's kind of the, the longer story of operation stuff. Um but a fifty million dollar price, price tag for a new facility is gonna be the most expensive building the county's ever built, and will be the most expensive the county builds until they build it again. And it is a tough bill to swallow. Uh I would say, as, as Dennis put. Uh, I would say, as, as Dennis put in the beginning of this report, and as we often see, you don't have a terrible building. It's a frustrating per, time when you, you need to start making the long term plan. So doing the immediate action buys you some time, it's when we get into that second eight million dollars, the short term items. It may be starting to consider, you know, let's not go down that road instead. Let's budget for five years from now, looking at considering a replacement facility or something like that. Uh, the middle ground that we don't often recommend, but it's not our money, is to put on a new housing unit onto the building. So the biggest liability for you in operations is in your, in your intake area and in your housing area. It's not in the kitchen, it's not in the maintenance facility, it's not in support spaces or staff offices. It's where you've got people with limited supervision in cells by themselves. And that's what your liability and your legal costs could just trump anything that we're talking about. Uh, housing units are very different today than what you have. Um, you can't renovate them well, usually takes replacement. We have costs in the new building spreadsheet for housing units. We could extrapolate those for additions if there was a middle ground that was more palatable. Um, it's a little tough, you've got a lot of different eras of construction on this building, so it's not a, it's not a clean answer. It is something you'll need to deal with in the next ten years.
So. I think I understand you, but going back to the. Operational cost of a new fifty million dollar facility. As I understand you, gentlemen, to say, yes, we have marvelous brands banking new building. But it will carry by nature significantly higher operational costs than the existing facility now. Is, is that one of your points?
No, that wasn't what I intended to say, and I would certainly not consider myself an expert on the operations of the facility. The point more so is that, um, if we, we look at a building like a product, so we say you're buying a twenty five year, thirty year product. If you're not buying a building that'll be here forever, we use them longer, but we have to plan a useful life. Before our A C units go and then everything else after that. So in that lifetime of the building, more dollars are being spent, three times as many dollars being spent to operate it. Then we're spent to build, oh, the same thing would be said for a renovation, anything else. It's that your bulk of your cost is in the people that run the facility, not the concrete and the walls.
Missions.
Question, Commissioner.
Sue, maybe you can answer this question, I don't know. But, but, but it's saying new facility is built and on a much more efficient. Uh, running for the staff.
Yep.
Will that help control staff costs in the future? And I know, I'm assuming it's going to make it a lot safer for the staff and for the inmates.
Yep.
Um. Will that have any sort of a cost control in the future by limiting the amount of staff you might need?
Yes, that's the goal, right? We go in with a lot of these facilities, you, like yours, so yours is added on to, added on to, added on to, and each time it's a compromise. And now the staff are living in the whole thing and you, you need more staff to cover that entire building. Than if it was just say two housing units. Right, and you, during the day, it's probably not that much different with the overnights where you need. Whatever, one person in each unit, you know, whatever your regulations are, but. The, yes, the staff cost, you, you may have fewer staff, but as we all know, staff costs rise.
Sure.
So. The idea is that a design for a new facility would use less staff. Than what you're using.
What?
Or the same amount, same amount, but working regular hours instead of tons of overtime.
Have you looked at the property that we have around the jail?
Um, I, I, we didn't walk it, it was a lot of snow on the ground when I was here.
Oh, okay.
But I have looked at it on, you know.
If we did go forward to new channel to construct on our property, man.
It, it appeared like there would be, yes, I mean.
We were planning to put five acres of solar panel.
Yeah, five acres.
No, there's five.
I, I, I believe there would be, assuming about a hundred beds, you know, there, there's a lot of discussions that would have to happen in order to really answer that question. You know, the first one is how many beds are you talking? We'd have to go through that whole analysis to get there and it's one twenty, maybe it's one fifty, maybe it's eighty, I don't know, but. Hundred bed ish jail with using the, continuing to use the, um, kitchen and laundry out of this facility. Then yes, I think it's very reasonable to, to put that there and then taking down some of the existing will give you more space. I, I think it's within reason.
It, it's not a guarantee, I mean, I think that's important to say that. You do not necessarily relieve staffing costs with a new facility. What you have is a gift and a curse as a New Hampshire county, is you get to make the decisions. Whereas many states that we do work in, there is another entity that is providing much more regulation and rules for the county jails. I'm on my way to New York after this to spend day in two counties of New York. Where those counties are at the mercy of what the state is telling them they have to do, so it's much easier answer to give. We can tell them staffing because it's a calculated formula. For you guys, it's all about how you want to run the facility and the type of facility you have. Which when you get to some of that, allude to a bit in this report, things like conforming with A C A. American Correctional Association guidelines, providing natural light, creating a mood that would create less incidences. Uh, there's a lot of options, so we would love to be able to give you more definitive answers, but it is in fact. Pretty wide open, uh, where you go, I'd like to see ten acres for a new jail, no matter what size. But if you have other supporting site, here it sounds like five acres is more than enough for the building footprint. If everything else can be supported by the rest of the campus.
Because, yeah, when you think about parking and rickyards and maintenance access and all those.
The items in.
Immediate priority section, are they?
Are they listed in the rising order of both organs?
No, they're not, I, they're listed. As the, as a report, so the report kind of goes kind of per discipline, if you will, architecture and engineering, structural. And I, I put them in based on the order they appear in the beginning of that report.
You know, if you had like a target maintenance budget, we could prioritize them into buckets, maybe that's kind of what we're getting at. It is each year, we could maybe spend a certain amount of money to, to keep things, keep things coming. Um, we could certainly look at that and, and chunk out. The percentages of the, the multipliers on those, but the more refined we get, the less accurate it is, yeah.
Deborah, I'd like you to share this um opinion with Chairman Boon. And by sheer boards and delegation at large. We have the budget coming upon us just a week or so. And I think they should be made aware of some of the degradations at that facility that. Probably need to be addressed sooner rather than later. Uh, any further questions, commissioners?
I don't know.
Uh, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, you gentlemen, that was very, very helpful, very comprehensive, very informative.
Thank you.
And very candid. Lori Sharp?
Yes.
Hi Laura.
Hi, how are you?
Lori, nice to see you, what do you have for us?
Good to see you.
Good news, we hope.
I think it's fine, I think it's fine, I think there's a few areas that concern me, but we'll wait, maybe still a little early, so. So we're seventy nine percent now through this year. Now we'll start off looking at the revenue. Um, the county administration, um. Department projects a fourteen thousand nine hundred dollar surplus. Um, as you know, that's due to our recent receipt of the Gunstock check coming in higher than we had anticipated. Um, so that's good news. Um, finance, we continue to project a surplus of a hundred and forty thousand. Um, that's due to the interest earned by investments, um, we are currently earning four point one fifth percent on deposits. Uh, deeds, you've just heard from Laura, deeds is projecting a hundred and one thousand dollar surplus. Uh, revenues have caught up from where they were at the beginning of the year, um, more good news there. Uh, the sheriff's office is projecting a surplus of fifty two thousand, that's due to sheriff's fees and outside details. More good news. Uh, corrections continues to project a deficit there, it's thirteen thousand four hundred. Um, that is catching up a little bit, but that was due to the jail temp just being lower than what was budgeted for at the beginning of the year. Health and human services, we have a projected surplus of three hundred and twenty one thousand, which is due to the second half of the year invoice coming in lower than we had anticipated. Uh, so we have a total general fund surplus of six hundred, revenue of six hundred and twelve thousand six fifty seven. Well, the nursing home, we're anticipating a three hundred and ninety seven thousand two twenty seven revenue. Surplus due to that pro share receipt, which was three hundred and forty nine thousand more than what we had budgeted. Um, and also because of the private pay census, which um continues to be higher than what we anticipated when we were doing the budget. So the overall surplus for revenue for the general fund and the nursing home uh is anticipated to be one million. Nine thousand eight hundred and eighty four dollars. And then expenses, the county attorney's office is projecting a surplus of. Roughly forty thousand dollars, that's due to a position that was open there for um majority of the year. And the benefits and the taxes that go along with that. County administration expense was projecting a thirty five and almost hundred dollar surplus and that was due to a staffing change. And I T, we're continuing to project a surplus there of eighty five hundred and that's due to um project costs being lower than what we had anticipated. In finance, I have a tiny little surplus projected right now of seventy eight dollars. In deeds, there's a projected expense surplus of sixty four hundred and that was due um to staffing there. County maintenance, um, and here's the bad news, right now we're projecting a deficit of sixteen, almost seventeen hundred dollars. Um, the determination on where that's going to end up is really going to be the electricity and the heating fuel lines. Uh, and just keeping an eye on that and if nothing else goes drastically wrong. Um, was for unexpected repairs between now and the end of the year. Who would want to be keeping an eye there? Uh, the sheriff's office, we're projecting a surplus of twenty five thousand, that's uh due to a staff change that had impacted the health insurance line. As well as some savings that's being projected in tower rental software support. And communication repair maintenance. Corrections, we're projecting a surplus of a hundred and thirty eight thousand, most of which that uh is due to a surplus in wages and benefits. Um, also a surplus in dietary and that's offset by a deficit in contracted medical. Restorative, we're anticipating a surplus of nine hundred and thirty four dollars and that was due to a staffing change. Health and human services is expected to have a surplus of a hundred and fourteen thousand four seventy two. Um, that's due to that second half of the year invoice coming in lower than we had anticipated. And debt service anticipates a surplus of sixty eight hundred dollars, that's due to savings and interest paid. Um, that is offset by professional services, um, those are a little bit higher. Um, when I did budgeting last year, I anticipated the second borrowing. Professional services fees to be lower and actually they charge the same for the first and the second borrowing. Um, but still an overall surplus there of sixty eight hundred, so the general fund anticipates a surplus of three hundred. Forty thousand nine hundred and seventy four dollars. In the nursing home, there's a projected surplus of two hundred and sixty six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Again, the debt service, they're projecting a forty five hundred dollar surplus there due to interest paid. Uh, nursing home admin anticipates a deficit of forty five eight forty four, uh that's due to the bed tax projection. Uh, the bed tax is, seems like it might have been budgeted a little bit low last year. Um, obviously we're taking some measures to correct that for next year. Nursing home maintenance expects a surplus of ten thousand one seventy three, that's due to inspected savings and electricity, including the fuel. Rehab services has a deficit of twenty eight three eighty five. And that's due to health insurance coverage change, but that's offset in the nursing home health. Insurance line. Dietary, we're anticipating a deficit of a hundred and twenty thousand four twenty three. That's driven by the contracted dietary services line. And then nursing expects a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar surplus and that's due to. The anticipated hundred and seventy five thousand surplus in contracted nursing and a three hundred and four thousand dollar surplus in staffing. Um, which of course is going to be wages, you probably turn to retirement and all. Uh, housekeeping has an eleven thousand dollar surplus, that's due to open conditions. Physicians and pharmacy have an eighteen thousand dollar deficit. Uh, that's due to a hundred and thirteen thousand deficit in med B services. Offset by a ninety four thousand surplus in med A services, medicine, dentist and ambulance, so that's all dependent on the census and the nursing home. And their required service. Activities has a forty two hundred dollar gap, that, that's mostly due to overtime wages and hairdressing expects a six thousand dollar surplus and that's due to wages. Uh, so that for the overall, uh, two hundred and sixty six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollar surplus. Uh, that. Actually, I'm sorry, the total general fund and nursing home expense surplus is anticipated to be six hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and ninety three dollars. Um, added to the revenue surplus of a million nine thousand eight eighty four, that's going to add a million. Six hundred thousand seventeen dollars seven hundred, yeah. My goodness, a million six hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy seven dollars to the fund balance at the end of two thousand and twenty five. And you can see that on your next handout. So the projected fund balance at the end of two thousand and twenty five would be four million one hundred eighty two thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Um, on our cash flow, our current cap position is five million forty nine thousand three hundred and four two dollars. We did close the second tan on October ninth and it was in the amount of four thousand, I'm sorry, four million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Our interest rate on that was four point three five percent. Um, we did receive three bids. They were from Camden National Bank. They offered us a four point one three interest rate, which was actually better than the four point three five that we got with J P Morgan. However, they required us to open accounts with them for deposit accounts. Um, and that uh wasn't an option. Union Bank with the other one at six point one percent. Um, so that was the one I mentioned, but I was here the last time that we had received um the information on. Um, hoped we'd come in better, we obviously did at the four point three five percent. And this all went to the treasurer, of course, for his review um and uh selection based on the rates. And the. Let's see, and then the last thing you have is the A R. Um, you can see we're still collected. Some from two thousand twenty four, um. We're still collecting on target at ninety six percent. And then in September, you can see the percent collected is eighty three percent, that's very low comparatively to what we normally do and it's because of the timing. In regards to when a billing got done. Um, and so I would expect to see in October that that uh would be a higher percentage collected because we'll see money coming in for that billing at that time.
Uh, were you recall off the, off if your head would unbalance for us at the end of?
The end of twenty twenty four, it's, yep, it's right on your sheet, it's five trillion sixty five. Yeah.
You're pretty confident in the twenty five number.
I suppose the excess revenue and the operational savings continually get adjusted based on. What we're projecting in our expense and revenue, so those of course are unaudited and you do change based on those expense and revenue fluctuations really here. But that said, we do typically come in pretty close to where we're protesting.
Commissioner. No, thank you.
Lori, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, uh, next up.
Shelley.
Shelley Richardson.
Welcome.
Hi. Director, how are you?
Good evening.
We're looking for those, can you remind me?
I know, I told Lori. Um, what I would like to do is ask, first of all, um, if I can waive the purchasing policy, because we'd like to add seven more cameras. To the nursing home, we've had a couple of investigations in different areas where we've gone to try and look at spots and we either. End up, it's a blind spot, we don't have a camera there or we have a column in the way. So, um, we did ask, uh, one source security, which is our vendor, we've been with them for seven years, they've done our cameras initially. And, um, monitored, they've given us, um. Good, good service, training, they're always available when we need them. Um, and they came up with a quote to add the seven cameras that we're looking for. Um, five of them would be added interior and two exterior for the parking lot and we need another one out here by. And we need another one out here by looking at restorative justice and the handicap spots. We don't have anything in that part of the parking lot. Or over in the east wing with the employee entrances, we have a limited area that we can save. And we've had bear in boxes kind of mosey around the front door. So I would like to be able to not, because it's over the ten thousand dollars, put out. Another R F P for somebody because they're our sole vendor that we use. One source.
Is there equipment proprietary cameras that they?
I don't think so. Do you know the manufacturer of the cameras? A Vigilon, I think is the name of the company Vigilon. They do not know.
Alright, so if it's not proprietary and we could buy cameras cheaper, then can be added on to their system. I think we'd want to look at that.
We, well, we need to still update our system with the software because it's due actually to be updated. We were gonna have to put this in the budget next year, so it will end up saving us putting it into the twenty six budget. And also it would give us more hardware to be able to retain video longer. We only have right now thirty two to thirty eight days on our camera system.
I guess I'm confused, and I thought, I thought this request was to purchase cameras.
It, it's both, it's both, it's for the, it goes with the cameras, with the correlating software. And the updating, like updated licensure required to go with it.
Shelley, how many blind spots to cap off there?
Well, the seven is what we found.
A total of seven blind spots.
Yeah, five interior that we, in the day rooms, the way the cameras are now. We have columns that block it, so we want to put one on the opposite side so that it will shoot towards the nurse station. Same thing with the dining room. And the area between the director of nursing and the conference room and the scheduler's office. That hallway doesn't have anything, it ends at the doors on both sides.
I think we've learned commissioners that sometimes these blind spots in nursing home have consequences. What say you gentlemen? Oh, please.
Shelley.
Yes.
Is one source, do we have a contract with one source now?
Yes.
What does that, what does that encompass?
It encompasses all the other cameras that we have, the software, the website. We're able to go in and see all the cameras and it has the licenses for the cameras that we do have.
So if we were to say no and make it go out to bid, and it got, another company got the bid.
I don't know, but would be compatible.
Correct, we would now possibly have two companies.
Two companies.
Okay.
Yeah.
How much of the twenty thousand seven hundred is cameras and how much is the? Upgrade of software licensing?
They did not break the bill down into that whole thing, everything is written down. The one year plan, the hardware, the software that goes to it, the counter, the corner mounts. The wall bracketing, the domes, wire assemblies, which is. Everything came up to a total of twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty eight dollars.
They did not itemize.
They didn't itemize.
Thousand dollars for seven cameras is a lot of money, so I'd like to know what the. What the additional software upgrade and license cost is. What's our contract term?
I can. It's one year for the products themselves and the camera channel. I can ask them if they can itemize it.
Is the software update because we're adding more cameras?
Yes, so because we're adding more cameras, we're gonna have to have more retention time added to be able to save more. Of the time period that we keep looking for, and I think the licensures too.
We need more licenses.
For the more licenses for the cameras.
If it helps any, the budget that you just heard about includes this purchase. Just as a projection, we, if, if it was to be, if you agree to do this, right, we wanted to factor it in, just so.
Commissioner Waring, how essential is it for us to view a breakdown, an itemization? These would be software cost, camera cost.
I'll go along with board, I mean, twenty thousand seven hundred dollars for seven cameras.
Agreed.
This seems like a lot, and I'm, and I'm sure it's all valid and it's there, but it just. Maybe I missed something. I don't think we can, if we, if we want to do it, we can do it and not do the software updates. Right.
I can ask them for any more itemized. For labor and wire.
Do they have by Saturday? Do they have it by Saturday?
Um, I don't know, I can try.
We have a meeting Saturday, we can certainly table that still then.
Okay.
So Deborah, we can move this on Saturday pending further information. I think that's fair, yeah. Shelley, thank you. Trish Thompson and Restorative Justice, um, Trish, how are you?
Good. If you would indulge me, I would like to give you the information that you requested when I came here asking what I'd merge two programs before we get into my budget. So you should have in your packet, a labor cost comparison. So currently twenty twenty five, the labor cost for pre-trial, currently the way it is, and restored justice currently the way it is. It's three hundred and sixty five thousand two hundred and seventy two dollars. The projection to leave it the way it is currently in twenty twenty six is three, three hundred and seventy three thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. However, though, with the merger, pre-trial cost goes away, Restorative Justice does increase. To our twenty twenty six cost would be one sixty nine seven forty nine, but with the merger. The total cost will go to two thirty five, five forty four. Important part here, though, if you take the twenty twenty six projection to leave it the way it is versus the twenty twenty six merger. You're saving a hundred and thirty seven thousand six hundred and twenty seven dollars. And it's important to factor that, to cover the increase, the budget from the jail will move over to Restorative Justice to cover that budget.
And again, that's, that's. How many F T Es in the one thirty seven that's in pre-trial in twenty six? Projected budget, so a hundred and thirty seven thousand in the projected twenty twenty six for pre-trial, that's how many F T Es? That's just that one or is that two?
One, that, that, that one thirty seven is really representative of one full-time employee with benefits.
So that one full-time is gonna move from pre-trial to Restorative Justice?
No, the part-time person's moving only, we're getting rid of the full-time position. It's eliminating that full-time position altogether.
So currently, this projected in twenty twenty six, there's only one full-time or there's one full-time and a part-time in there?
One full-time and one part-time.
Okay, that's, so, one. One point eight. F T Es in the hundred and thirty seven thousand.
Okay.
Right.
I, I don't know how to convert from real people to F T Es, just telling you.
How many hours is part-time employee work?
Thirty two.
Thirty two, so that's point eight of a full-time, one is forty, it's a one point eight F T Es.
Okay.
So then you're moving to, to consolidate and move it to Restorative Justice, that's gonna move to. The point eight, the part-time point eight, it's gonna eliminate one full-time position.
Yes.
And that one full-time position elimination, we're gonna see the reduction in corrections budget on Saturday.
Yes.
This projected change, requested change would start when, as January?
January first. It'd be as soon as you gave me permission to do it. The superintendent and I had a plan going forward, we'd want to make sure we gave notices to clients, very short period of time. And then the short transition, it'd be a week, week and a half at the most. Yeah, the sooner it starts, the sooner the savings start. Right, the sooner the savings start, that's correct.
And currently, the full-time position is vacant, is that correct?
Yes. Alright, so changing gears here, my budget. You should have my cover letter in front of you, you also shouldn't have an Excel spreadsheet surprise. There's some fluctuation to look forward to. Few areas of increase that I'd like to just touch on real quick. Line item fifty one two hundred, that really is wages. Again, that wage increase is sixty one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, and that will be supplemented by the jail moving those funds. And there is a little bit of movement because there, there was a staff change as well. Line fifty six, one ten, there's an increase of six hundred and sixteen dollars. That is to cover annual membership fees. One of the things that is really important when I took over the program is that we were a certifying agency. That is defendable, evidence-based. And we have standards, and we're adhering to those standards to make us a really fantastic program. Line fifty six one thirty is an increase of five hundred and seventy five dollars. That is to cover the cost for travel to go to some of the recertifying events. That one person will go to each year. So this will just be a one person goes to an event to get recertifying C E Us, to make sure they keep their certifications current. Fifty six to fifty, fifty five dollars, it's really just to cover a roll of stamps. Some big notable decreases, though, I think is important. Line fifty three four ten telecommunications, we had a vendor change, so there's a pretty big decrease of nine hundred dollars there. Also a decrease in fifty three seven oh three, again, also a vendor change. In general, operating cost, I think is important, fifty six one hundred is a decrease of twelve hundred and twenty five dollars. Big thing here is to note that I did shift some expenses from this line into the training line. Cause I think they just fit a lot better, and also we have a juvenile annual membership fee that is due. But it's coming due every two years now instead of every year, so that's not reflected in this budget. And line fifty six three fifty, fuel, gasoline, four hundred and thirty seven dollar decrease. I have talked to the superintendent, she has a much larger need for that van than myself, and she happily took it off my hands.
So there'd be no vehicle associated with the program?
There is no vehicle associated with the program. Same thing for line five six 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 zero, again, it goes to the van, decrease to seven hundred and seventy one dollars. And again, the superintendent was gracious enough to take that from me. I think it's important that the commissioners know that really, I took a pretty conservative approach with this budget. I think everything is there that's needed to run this program and at the standard that is expected from this county. So any questions you have, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time.
I appreciate the report.
So Trish, I'm looking at the bottom line for total restorative justice. We're looking at two forty six, six forty one.
Correct.
And that is up from one eighty seven thirty four.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty five.
Yep.
Okay, and the primary cause of that increase is?
Is the position change. This budget is reflecting the, the part-time position coming over. So that's gonna, gonna be a sixty one thousand dollar difference. So the jail is just gonna move that money over.
So how does that reconcile with the projected one-year savings of one thirty seven six one seven?
Well, if we do the math real quick, minus sixty one thousand, still.
So it's offsetting from corrections?
Correct, coming out of corrections, that's what we should see.
Right.
Shelley's budget.
So.
Should see a reduction in her budget.
Cause the, the delegation will certainly need to understand that going forward.
So this, this increase of sixty four, sixty five thousand dollars. Is buying, offering, running two programs in essence. So one program that used to be in the jail is no longer gonna be in the jail. This program is gonna provide all those services for the additional sixty five thousand. And you'll be saving double that when you look at it, it's really.
So it's taking a bag of money out of corrections.
Yes.
Most two full-time positions out of corrections, taking more out of corrections than it's costing in.
Okay.
Adjustments.
Right, you want to make sure going forward, that's completely understood very clearly to the convention.
Yes, okay.
Now that, it will show in the wage.
Right.
Numbers, when we look at the wages in detail, you'll see those two positions are no longer in the correction department.
Be clear to those that want them to be clear. Okay.
Those we should see. So I don't know if it's a good time or not to respectfully ask if I have the commissioner's approval to move the program. To merge the two.
I'm gonna say conditionally yes, after Saturday's budget meeting, because I just want to confirm.
Okay.
And I see the saves on the corrections budget that matches up, and if, if that, then I have no objection.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. No further questions? Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
Thank you much.
Deborah, other business.
I do not commit any other business for you.
So I, Trish Waring, you know, I just, I, I do have a little other business pursuing.
Good chair, yeah, give it, give it to us.
Go so through that, I inspired earlier this evening, with respect to the deficiencies in the jail. And I'm just thinking and speaking out, talking mad without consulting with my colleagues. I'd like us to come up with an amount of money for twenty twenty six, that can be carved out of the budget we submit. That can address some of these, we can tackle some of these, so some of these deficiencies in the jail will get taken care of. Sometime in twenty twenty six.
Well, I like a little caveat of that, I like those deficiencies, you're looking to fund them. I like to have a sit down with the superintendent and find out how she feels, what is the priority of not us making that.
Very good suggestion.
Actually, were to expand it, then would include the county administrator and.
Yes.
Director of facilities and, and the. Shell as well as anybody else within harbor corrections, to, to go through that and say, here's, here's recommendations for year one. Right, so that's kind of why I was trying to find out if you were on some priority list because. There's some very large items on there that I know where there's not going to be appropriate funds to do that. But as much as we can, we should.
I agree, and try and tackle the smaller ones if we can.
So whatever is the highest priority, and if one of those, the highest priority is a million dollar project, then that's what we should try to go after.
Okay, agreed. So how soon can we do this, Deborah? I know we're gonna be paying everybody on Saturday, but.
Yes, we, we, the group that has met about it is the facilities director, myself, the superintendent, and the captain. And we went through these and talked about how much do we think can spend and what would be the priority. And that number is in your budget.
Okay, great.
Already, there is a number in there, and I think the superintendent and facilities director will both be able to speak about that a little on set.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deborah, because you know, what the commission will be looking to do is to build a case for these improvements that we can present to the convention for ultimate approval. And so that they have a clear understanding of. For ultimate approval, and so that they have a clear understanding of what needs to be done, more importantly, why it needs to be done. Okay, that was my other business.
Just looking at the schedule, can we shift the sheriff and?
Yes, you're looking at the schedule for Saturday.
Sheriff is in between facilities and corrections. Can we move corrections forward?
Yeah, I didn't bring my.
John and Shell there.
I think John will be on, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll work that out.
Is, is.
I'll be heading, uh, corrections. At nine o'clock, right after facilities.
Alright, I'll work that, I'll work that out with them.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, very good, soon. Uh, is there any public comments? Seeing none. I move, we adjourn.